I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'm going to give my pre-meeting announcement. As Chair of the Board of Selectmen for the Town of Newton, New Hampshire, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe or listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are utilizing Zoom Conference and software for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate during this meeting through the platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in the meeting through dialing the following phone number: (929) 205-6099. Meeting ID number is (869) 075-36632. We're using the link provided. We previously gave the notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the conference bell via phone. If you have any problem, please email In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by a roll call vote. So we're going to start, as always, with Trish. If you want to give us the update, please go ahead.
Sure, thank you. Okay, again, they're fairly quick, even though we haven't spoken in a week. I consolidated everything. The first thing to start out with is Homeland Security. They're working on PPE programs to distribute for the towns for voting purposes for this fall. For those of you that have been in Town Hall, you can see poor Mary Jo has cases of stuff in hallway outside her door, like the 6,000 ballots or envelopes, or not ballots, but envelopes and all the supplies, and there's still more coming. They did want us to know that they're preparing for, just in case anyone is interested in this, it doesn't pertain to Newton, but the NASCAR. You probably hear them talking about it on the news. They're expecting 18,000 race fans, so they're working on that for to handling the crowd, and I don't know how they're going to do that with social distancing, but that's on Sunday. Our numbers that we always like to keep up with since last week. So we have, as of today, 6,262 confirmed cases. That's up 123 since last Wednesday when we spoke. There's 5,316 persons that have recovered. That's up 180 since last Wednesday. We have, unfortunately, 400 deaths. That's up by five since last Wednesday. Total hospitalizations COVID in New Hampshire is 677. However, currently in the hospital with COVID is only 23. They did talk about releasing information either this week or early next week in terms of school, the readiness guidance. The Secretary of State's office is actually going to address issues to do with elections. There was a lot of conversations on today's call regarding the elections and issues that are going to arise out of it, and they're going to put together a FAQ sheet. They did remind us that localist election officials cannot deny a voter the right to vote if they are not wearing a mask. They can actually use a curbside absentee ballot. They can use a separate area indoors for those that don't want to wear a mask, but we, by law, cannot deny them the right to vote if they don't want to wear a mask. They did, you remember on last week's call, we talked about the number of booths in a polling place, and we are required, based on our population, to have a certain amount of booths. Well, Governor Sununu did sign into law a reprieve for the number of booths in a polling place, and waivers can be granted by the Secretary of State if we need something further. When we got to the questions and answers, Fire Department did ask, is there a contact number for DHS that we can we can reach out to to get accurate COVID numbers in our community? As I know Chief Alcindino is on the call and probably Chief Jewett. We question sometimes our numbers, as this fire chief did, and they did say that they realize that sometimes the numbers are off. We're noticing it if it's somebody that was transported from our town to Massachusetts Hospital. We don't always get the results of that person if they turned out to be COVID or not, even if they were symptomatic. So they are working on that. You should know that. We had another fire chief that said, although they're not in a dire need at this moment for PPEs, they've got an order for N95 masks. They ordered 500 of them in anticipation of a surge, and that order has been, for weeks now, not been filled. And they just wanted to know if there's another good source for PPEs, just in case some of the towns need more PPEs and we can't get it through our EOC site. They also wanted us to know that a plane was delivering PPEs in Manchester, and along with food banks, they're delivering PPEs and military support to locations in Manchester and food banks. They wanted us to know there's no significant change in aviation, rail, or bus. And not only are they dealing with the NASCAR project that I mentioned earlier, they also now have to deal with Laconia Bike Week. So military support and operations may be deviated and going elsewhere instead of at our PPE and food banks. They also said that the local news, you know, usually the Joint Information Command tells us what's going on. And they said, the social media, it's focused on back-to-school plans. Department of Education also sent out a survey yesterday, actually, for statewide campaign and encouraging people to wear masks. And let me flip my pages. And they also are working on sending more PPEs to nursing homes, which seem to be very compromised over the next two weeks, and also reorganizing their warehouses while filling orders. And continuing to remind us to order PPEs, make sure we have stuff in our facilities for the fall elections. They anticipate that this could be problematic. And that's it for my report.
All right, thank you. You're right, Mary Jo's got a lot of boxes there, so that's a good thing. So we'll continue to tabs on that. The, I know Trish was not on the meeting last night, but on the meeting last night, we briefly spoke about the glass barriers, whatever we're calling them, are up in Town Hall.
Yes.
And Mary Jo was tagging last night about a Tuesday, I think it's the 28th, new opening date, based on what she needs to do. Is there anything else we need to be aware of regarding the soft opening?
I don't think so. We have the magnetic signs that will go on the doors, which are the ones that are going to say, the screening questions, and if you answer yes to any of these, don't ring the bell, don't come in, go home and, you know, make a new appointment. Every, all the other signs are in tomorrow, actually. And I think I saw Chief Alcindino on the line. The Fire Department is actually going to help me put out the signs in Town Hall tomorrow. Some of them, we need drills to drill through the metal supports where they're going to go. So those will be up tomorrow, along with the floor signage. The library, which probably doesn't pertain to what the question you were asking me, we're dealing with that on Friday. I'm not sure about their opening. They're doing their curbside thing right now. Everything else should be in place for the 28th. The one thing that I should mention, and I don't know if it was on the call, I apologize. I had another commitment. Tony actually mentioned to me the pass-through of the windows, say, going to Mary Jo's or Diane's. The little pass-through area, the upper corners of them, the corners are a little rough. And Tony was concerned that, you know, maybe they could be filed down. I did reach out to Mark. I wasn't sure that anything could be done. I reached out to Mark today, actually. And the, what he reminded me, which I did tell Tony yesterday, they can't be sanded, those points, because this Lexan glass, although you can punch it and you're not going to break it, you, it will scratch easily. So if he tried to sand those corners, they could scratch. What I asked him to do is see if there's some kind of little guide that could go over those corners. So he was going to check into that today, and he'll get back to me, maybe when I meet him on Friday at the library, just to see if there's a way to make those little points not be so sharp. Other than that, they do the, I think the windows look good. I think they're exactly what we wanted. It's very professional. It's not like hanging a piece of plastic that's going to swing and break in the breeze or whatever. So in answer to your question, I think we're good for whatever Mary Jo wants to do on the 28th.
All right, great. So we'll just, as a board, I guess we're going to just wait and hear from Mary Jo and Cheryl and Tim and Diane and Nancy, whenever they're there. We just want to hear the feedback from them as things proceed along to kind of figure out what we need to do next as we keep talking about, we're going to make adjustments as we need to. We're not, we think we've done a good job in anticipating what we need, but that doesn't mean we're not going to figure out we missed something or we're going to change it. It's just, none of us can predict all this stuff. But thank you for everybody's efforts on that. So anything else from the COVID-19 front?
Not from me.
Okay. So talked about it last night. There is a, you're going to see a lot more advertising from the state of New Hampshire about masks. Nothing, the Governor announced yesterday it would not be a mask order, but it's going to be an, I don't know if you want to call it encouraging mask. So we're going to see that a lot.
Yep.
Numbers are still good in New Hampshire. Let's keep them as good as they are, you know?
Yep.
All right. Diane, was there anything on the agenda I'm missing?
No, that's all we have for tonight.
All right, so I know the fire chief is on. He and I spoke briefly about the fire truck lease. Was there an update you wanted to share on that, Chief?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. In talking to the manufacturer during the pre-build, there was a couple of things that were added to the truck, some shelving, et cetera. They, he sent me an email this afternoon that the additions to finish the truck was $11,782. I can, and as of right now, about 31, a little more than $3,100 was for some extra shelving and stuff to mount the equipment. I could take some of the money out of the, out of my Fire Department budget, either on the equipment, by vehicle maintenance, vehicle repairs, wherever the Board chooses. We need to get the documents signed before they can stop the truck. The longer we take, as I said months ago, the longer the town takes in signing the contract for them to stop building the truck, everything is going up. So that 11,000 is including, you know, the cost of the truck that has gone up. So I'm asking for the Board to vote for the extras and to authorize the Chairman to sign the contract so they can stop building the truck.
All right, so on April 27th was when we made the motion. So that was $69,092. So our warrant article goes to, how much was the warrant?
The warrant article was for $649,000 for the truck and $76,000 in change per year for 10 years. Even with the extras, we are not touching the six, we're not going over the $649,000, nor are we going over the $76,000 that was voted.
Yeah. So does anybody on the Board want to make a mo? It seems like this is all budgeted. This is taken care of. We just need the Board's approval. The chief wants to make sure all the i's are dotted, all the t's are crossed. What, does anybody on the Board have any questions or want to make a motion?
Yeah, so Matt, if that's all covered under the warrant article, why does he need to take it out of his budget? Or why do we need another vote if it's already voted on by the warrant article? He can put on whatever shelves he wants as long as he doesn't go over that top dollar.
Chief, did you get that?
I, that's what I'm used to. But in the April meeting, I thought that the Board of Selectmen made a motion for the truck not to exceed a certain amount, which, going back to the minutes, the Board did not. The Board just voted for the note not to exceed 69,000 per year. But the warrant articles is...
It can't exceed the warrant article, so...
Then we're perfect, then we're perfectly fine. I just, I just need the Board to give the green light on it, I would assume.
Yeah, so like I said, you're looking to dot i's, cross t's, right?
100%, yes.
Yeah, full transparency. The amount from April 27th is different than the amount today is essentially what it is. And I think the reason you mentioned your budget wasn't so much that you need it, but you could, right? Is that, that was part of Larry's question too, right, Larry?
Correct.
Correct.
It's covered under the warrant article. Don't take it out of your, out of your budget.
Yeah.
Which is fine. I just brought that up as an alternative if the Board did not want to sign on the extras. Our choice was either take it out of my budget or we go back to the drawing board, which will delay the truck longer, and we start taking stuff off the truck.
Yeah.
But you got to look, you got to look at it as it's part of the truck. It's not extras. It's a shelf, it's a shelf that's needed. It's not, it's a need, it's not a want. You know, I want a black shelf.
Correct. Right, the manufacturer calls it extras because in the spec that they sent, that was the basic spec, it was not included in it. During the pre-build, which, that's how you build a custom fire truck, is when you sit down at the table with everybody and you go through each line out of 190 pages, you either say, yes, okay, well, we wanted the spec called for a red truck. We wanted it a color to match all our fire trucks. Well, that's, to them, that's a change order. That's an extra.
Yep, correct. But as long as it falls under the warrant article price range, they shouldn't, they shouldn't have to request another signature for the change. As long as you approved it with your committee that approved it, then they should all be good.
Correct. They are asking, the manufacturer is asking for, they actually asked for the fire chief to sign it. I ticked it back and said, since the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen has signed all the documentation for the Chairman to sign it. But that was never voted upon yet. I agree with you 100% Larry. You and I have been doing the fire service for a long time. I just want to cross the t's, dot the i's.
So Matt, I would make the motion that any further small changes that come up, just let the chief authorize it, and he knows that he can't go over the warrant article instead of keep bothering you for a signature that really you don't need.
Okay, so anybody want to second that?
I want to, I wanted to discuss it a little bit, if we could.
So let's say Charlie just seconded for discussion. Go ahead, Charlie.
My discussion would be is, Matt, we have already turned around and signed a lease agreement in the amount of $690,000, correct?
Yeah, roughly, 69,000.
Okay, but we've signed that. So now, where does this $11,000 come from? Do we, if you turn around, you have to redo your lease. But this is a point I wanted to bring up. You might have to redo your lease because that $11,000 is not in there. That's why I think the chief said that, you know, if we give them, what, $3,500 bucks now, right away, we can pick up the other $8,000 as we go down the road and pay it at the end or whatever.
So clarification, so the money is there, but the lease, the monthly payment for the lease is already set at, we're going to say, that $629. We'll just use that for a figure. He had $20,000 to spare, and now he needs $11,000 in changes, which will bring it up to $1140, but it's going to change the monthly payment.
That's right.
You think they would do the monthly, you think they would do the lease after the truck is built so we have the final price? As long as we're still in the warrant article. So I see where you're going with it, that we have a monthly price now and it's going to change that $11,000 divided into the 10 years, whatever that comes out to, correct?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so that, I don't know what the numbers are for that, but we're still good on it. So Matt, you might have to sign that, that's fine. But I wish the company would just hold off at the end and say, hey, here's your monthly bill. We kept it at your warrant article, and this is what you're going to pay.
Mr. Foot, if I may, that was not the, that, Larry, that was not the company. The company came forward with a number and an interest rate and a monthly payment. In all their documentation, they clearly said that that is subject to change because the interest rates change daily. For all we know, you could go back to the table and hypothetically, if the interest rate was 10% in May, you could have the interest rate at 6% now. You and I are on the same page. I'm used to, once the truck is done, just like your car, you finalize the car. Before you pick it up, you do your bank. The town didn't do it. The town, and that was the motion that was made. They took the numbers that were given by the manufacturer in April and said, okay, this is what we're going to vote on. And that's where, how we got there today.
So I think if I'm understanding this correct, we're just voting on the new amount out of transparency sake. But the lease payment will not, the lease payment is going to be different just by sheer difference of the number of the total figure, correct?
That, I didn't do nothing with the lease, Matt. That I do not know. I do...
So Nancy is waving. Nancy, what do you have?
The, we've already made this year's payment. It's 76,000 each year.
Okay.
It's not a monthly payment. We've already made this year's payment. That's locked in.
Okay.
So Nancy, what is, that's 76,000. What does that bring us for the total?
I don't know, Larry. I don't have any of that paperwork in front of me.
The paperwork I had, I'm going by the warrant article, Mr. Foot. The warrant article was for $649,000 with 10 payments of 76,000 for the next 10 years.
That's right.
So 760.
So if I'm correct, and Nancy, please correct me if I'm wrong, if the payment was made for 76,000, then the truck, then the truck, the loan is for 649,000?
Correct.
So we're still under...
Right, so my question is, so that 11,000 still comes into that figure of 649. And then at the end, if we make eight, eight years of 76, nine years of 76,000, that final year is when you're going to get that balance of, hey, it's only 60,000 or 50,000?
It's a lease program. What you're doing, when you pay the $76,000, your first payment, you're paying your payment plus your interest. And it's figured all the way through. If you went and paid it all off tomorrow, you wouldn't get a reduction, not unless it was in your lease agreement.
Well, that's what I'm saying, Charlie. So what I'm trying to figure out is, we're paying 76 times 10 for 760. The truck is 649, so I'm assuming the rest is interest. So I'm going to use the figure of 649. If he's adding 11,000 today, that would bring that 649 down to 638. So the truck was valued at 638 as of yesterday. Today, we're going to add 11, so it'll be 649. You know what I'm trying to say?
I know what you're trying to say, but what I am trying to say is, once you sign a lease, depending on what's said in the lease, you've got to agree to it. Now, if you turn around and can break that, you may lose that first year's payment. It's like borrowing from a finance company. Once you turn around and it's put in there, you've got to pay that first month's interest, even if you pay the whole bill off. The next day...
I agree. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Chief.
I understand everybody's thing. When, we originally talked, the cost of the truck came in $20,000 less than what the note is that the town took. If I'm understanding Nancy correctly, so we already paid, included in that 76,000 a year for the next 10 years, the town already paid an extra $20,000 on the truck. So this $11,000 is a wash.
That's my point. That's the whole point.
I could see, I could see what, I could see what Selectman Melvin's saying. He is, I believe Charlie is 100% correct. If we took a note of 629, now we're trying to increase it. But if the town took a note of 649, we're ahead of the game $8,000.
Correct, if that's what we did. So my bottom line was, I didn't want to wait for 10 years, pay 70, 76,000. We overpaid 20,000. We didn't get anything for it. So we have that money in there. So that last payment in the 10th year will get balanced out, whether it's 70,000 we owe or 72,000, but it's not going to exceed 76. So if you're spending 11,000 now, you can still say you have a $9,000 balance if anything else comes up between now and then, correct?
Correct. Again, I didn't know, I didn't know what the note was. I wasn't sure if the note was for 629 or 649. If it's for 649, then you're 100% correct, Mr. Foot.
And I agree. Okay. Can Nancy answer that question?
No, I don't have any of the paperwork in front of me.
I can tell you what it says in the warrant article.
Yeah, they already know that.
So Nancy, I have to ask. So you don't have any of the paperwork in front of you because you don't have it, or you just don't have it with you?
I don't, I didn't expect this to come up. I don't have it with me.
Right, but it's not on your computer where you could...
I wouldn't even want to guess, Matt, because this is, I'm not comfortable with it.
Well, we don't want to guess anything. Just saying, you don't, we don't have this elect... Please, oh, Matt.
We do, but I'm, I, there's lots of pages. So I, I'm not comfortable with this. There was several documents that were signed.
Okay, so what's the Board want to do? Does the Board...
If it says 64, what does the warrant article say?
Warrant article says, warrant article says to enter into 10-year lease purchase agreement to purchase a fully equipped rescue pumper for the Fire Department at a cost of 649,000, payable over 10 years at a rate of 76,700. payable over ten years at a rate of seventy-six thousand, seven hundred forty-four dollars and fourteen cents annually. And then they, you raise that for the first payment, and then the full cost of the vehicle is six thou-, six hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars. The amount of the lease reflects the trade-in value of the vehicles being replaced.
All right, so we're not gonna go over to six forty-nine, so this, this shouldn't be an issue. So I'm gonna make the motion to allow them to do the eleven thousand dollar, and then, uh, we're still gonna be good.
All right, so, um, Diane, were you able to hear Larry on that? I'm not hearing him all that well.
I think he says he's making a motion to authorize eleven thousand dollars.
I make a motion to authorize eleven thousand dollars for the additional shelving and whatever he needs on the new fire truck, coming out of the warrant article not to exceed the six forty-nine.
Mr. Foot? I, not to, not to interrupt you, I, I know you made the motion. I'm trying, I, I had said it's eleven thousand and change. I think it's eleven thousand five hundred, it's eleven thousand six hundred. I- if you could amend your motion not to exceed eleven.
Exceed twelve thousand.
Say twelve thousand, that's fine, that's more than enough.
Okay.
So Matt, before he goes on, you still have another motion that you, Charlie, that they did ahead of that, that, uh.
Yes, so, so Larry, you're gonna kill your first motion, right?
Correct.
Okay, so Larry's got a new one, and we need a second.
I'm gonna second it.
Perfect. Charlie's the second. Any further discussion? All right. Larry, how do you vote?
Aye.
Charlie?
I'm gonna vote aye, but I'm kinda worried about it.
Okay. So that was.
I wish I knew how much the note was for.
Yeah, okay.
Big, can, can I just, I know, Charlie, I, I agree with you, but I'm, I'm gonna go out on a line and say if the note is seventy-six thousand dollars a year, that's for the full price of the truck, the six forty-nine. Because I remember somewhere, the note being sixty-nine thousand, one dollar, or sixty-nine thousand one hundred was on six hundred and twenty-nine thousand. So i- if that makes you feel any better.
Matt, I did find something on the lease. So, um, just if you want me to give you some information on that?
Yeah, before I vote, go ahead.
So, um, this is from the, it's tax-exempt leasing corporation. Uh, and they quoted a, of an E-one fire apparatus. The equipment cost approximate was six hundred twenty-nine thousand in, um, annual in advance for ten years at a rate of two point one two percent. And the payment would be sixty-nine thousand, one dollar, ninety-two cents. If you did it in, uh, if you did it like at the end of the year, it was a little more. It was seventy thousand, seven hundred, twenty-two dollars and thirty-one cents. I believe that is what the motion was that you voted on in April of, um, what day was it?
April twenty-seventh.
So we vote six twenty-nine.
That's co-, yes, that's what you, that's what the lease is for.
Yep. So that means that we don't have the extra money. We didn't borrow six forty-nine, even though we could. Am I correct?
Chief?
Uh, my hap-, when it came to the lease, Mr. Chair, that, I don't have none of the lease documentation. A- again, what I do know is if the town is paid seventy-six thousand dollars a year for ten years, from what I, because there's too many vehicles here. From what I remember, that was on a six hundred and forty-nine thousand dollar note. And in that, Diane just said what I just said. If it was sixty-nine thousand, I think one hundred, that was on a six twenty-nine note. Seventy-six thousand was on a six forty, six forty-nine note. I don't, I, I don't know, I, I, I don't know what the town signed for the lease.
All right.
Matt, can I, I'm gonna make an amendment to the, to the motion.
All right, go ahead, Larry.
The motion will go through, um, providing that the documentation is correct when they check tomorrow, so he doesn't have to hold off another two weeks until we meet. That, if those numbers match, for seventy-six thousand to six forty-nine, he could proceed with it. If it goes back to six forty-nine, then he says he has whatever he has in his budget to cover part of it, and will ha-, either look for the other eight thousand or take eight thousand off of what he's looking for as far as equipment.
Do you still want to second that, Charlie?
Yes, but so Charlie, Charlie, basically, he's gonna check the paperwork tomorrow, but instead of waiting until we meet again, because we're holding up the truck, if, if him and Nancy.
Believe me, I don't want to do that.
Right.
I don't want to hold up the truck.
If they're confident it's gonna be six forty-nine, then we're covered. If it's six twenty-nine, he's gonna have to run his numbers and see what he can pull out of his budget, and then go from there.
Okay, because basically, what she just said was, we borrowed, the lease was for six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, and we're.
Correct.
And we're paying seventy, we already paid a payment of seventy, seventy-six, we've already made a payment of seventy-six thousand.
So we gotta figure out what the interest is and all that, and why is it coming up to seventy-six thousand?
Because that's what the interest is, each year.
Right, so we have to, right, we have to see if that's all interest, or if they're banking that.
That's all interest. Well, most, most of these places get their money upfront.
All right, so are you a second, Charlie, or what do you think?
I'm all set, I'm all set. And I mean, I, I think if, if we come up tomorrow and, and the note's for six twenty-nine, and it's costing us seventy-six thousand dollars a year, he's not gonna have the money, it's not gonna be there. So we would have to. But he told me this afternoon when I was, because I spent some time with him, he explained it all to me, and I understand it. Uh, but he said that, like, thirty-one hundred or something like that, if it was paid up now, that they would let the other eight thousand, uh, take some time. Or eighty-five, thirty, eighty-five hundred or something like that, he would can do it at the end of the note. And that way, we could pick it up over a period of time.
Oh, I'm good with that. I'm good with that too.
All right. So Charlie, are you a second?
I'm a second.
Okay, so we got a second. We're gonna roll call vote, Larry.
Aye.
Uh, Charlie?
Aye.
Matt's an aye. So two things I will say here. Tomorrow more, tomorrow, not morning. Sometime tomorrow, all five of us, five of us and Nancy, need the documents in our email. Okay? Chief, you got that?
I, I don't have nothing with the lease, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so whoever has it needs to get together with the person who can get it, whether that's the chief, whether that's town administrator, whether that's, you know, I don't, I don't know who. But the five of us need to have it to review tomorrow. And if it doesn't line up the way we just talked about, then we're gonna have to do something different. Hopefully, it all lines up, and I'll get that signature in the next, probably by Friday, uh, for you, and we'll proceed, okay? That make sense to everybody?
Yep. Could I?
Yep, that, that's fine.
One more thing in there?
Go, Charlie.
Did we allow the fire chief to turn around and enter that, that agreement? If we have to, the three thousand or thirty-one hundred upfront, and the eighty-five somewhere down the road, where we, we, we don't have to take eighty-five hundred out of his budget, you know what I'm saying?
Absolutely. He can, he can put, he can put aside a thousand a year for the next eight years to cover it, if that's, if that's what they would like.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I didn't want to take the whole, I wouldn't want to take the whole eleven thousand out of his budget now. Just thirty-one hundred this year, which he could probably swing.
That's fine. That, that can be plan B, if plan A don't work out, absolutely.
But if, if he's talking with him, he can turn around and get that agreement going too, at the same time.
I- 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 if I may, the, Chi- Charlie, uh, i- i, we can do, you're a hundred percent correct. We can do the thirty-one, he can invoice me the thirty-one hundred dollars yesterday, if the board approves it. The remaining funds have to be paid by the time the truck is delivered to the town of Newton, which is three hundred and sixty-five days from the date we finally sign that piece of paper. So within a year, the, the rest of the funds would have to, we'd have to find the funds. It's not, it's not ten years.
Okay, then you could take four thousand this year and four thousand out of next year's budget.
If the board authorizes that.
I'm trying, I'm trying not to take it all out of your budget, and that's why I'm not.
No. And, and I truly appreciate it. I can't take it out of my budget, the board of selectmen can take it out of my budget. I can't take it.
Convince them.
A- 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 and technically, for the committee to sit back with E-one during COVID and trying to get everybody together for Zoom meetings and all this other stuff, to start going back to page one and start removing things, to take the, the amount out, i- 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 it's crazy. Honestly and truly, it's crazy. We, together, jointly, we have to find the funds. Because, again, this is a custom truck. When the truck comes in, we might find we need something else. So jointly, we have to come with the funds. We've come too far for, for, you know, eleven, twenty thousand dollars. And, and I agree with you, and I truly appreciate you trying not to take it out of my budget, and I thank you for that.
Well, Matt's.
But yes.
All right, so, so we have a plan to go forward here. The board will, every board member will have a view in the next couple of days before it's signed, but I have the authorization to sign if we don't see the numbers we're expecting, so.
Mr. Chair, just quick?
Yep.
Since the board has already voted, if the numbers are not there through the bond, can the board vote to authorize the, the four thousand? So I can have them write an invoice for four? You, the, I don't know if the board has to vote on it, we'll put it that way. The, that way I can.
That's why I said, we, we did plan A, is the, the warrant article. Plan B was you put up the four thousand now and the four thousand next year.
Okay, that's fine. I, I thought you said thirty-one, Larry, I apologize. Scratch what I just said.
Okay.
No, I was the one that said thirty-one. That was me. But that wasn't in the motion.
Well, whatever, the, whatever you have this year and then next year, so that's plan B. But we're gonna look at plan A first.
Not a problem. I appreciate the time the board of selectmen have given me to take care of this matter. Thank you.
All right, so we're leaving this topic. And, uh, anything else for tonight?
Matt, should I say anything about the, uh, uh, lot line adjustment?
Uh, yeah, if you just want to quickly update on what we've learned recently and what, what's happening, go ahead.
Okay. What, what I learned today, I went over and I saw the engineer, and the engineer explained to me that we do not have to do a lot line adjustment with the, uh, uh, daycare center. It was done in nineteen eighty-six, they were given an easement. So we're, we're all set right there. And the rest of the plan looks pretty good. Uh, if every, anybody wants copies of the plan, he will give me as many copies as we want. Uh, I signed the paperwork for him to go to the, uh, planning board, and he said it pretty, oh, he said that he ended up doing the whole, uh, peanut trail, and we're gonna have to notice everybody on the left, just to be safe. We don't have to, just her on the, uh, the daycare center on the right. Uh, uh, we'll be going into the planning board pretty much on the, I think, the first meeting in, in August. Uh, he's working on that. He has spoken with Jim Doggett, and they've got everything pretty much squared away. So that's where we are.
Good. So, so that for everybody's, uh, update is how we're moving forward with the lot line adjustment for the property that is still for sale. So, um.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, Matt, I did forget something.
Go ahead.
Where, where the leach field is on the fire station right now, it's out onto the peanut trail. We're gonna be giving them some of that land, but, uh, the, the line's gonna be cut right next to the leach field itself. But we're gonna give them an easement of ten feet all the way around, so that if he had to come in there and work on it, and he spilt any dirt on that, on our property, he'd still have an easement to do that. So it's not a big deal, but we'll be just giving an easement on that, that he can work around that septic. And that's.
Okay. Great. All right, so the, the wonderful thing about working with, uh, really old lot lines, this is the type of stuff you've come across, so.
Sure do.
All right, anything else for tonight? All right, anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. All right, there's a second, we're all in favor. So everybody have a good night, and we'll see you next Wednesday for the COVID meeting. Thanks.